Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Thursday, August 7, 2025, meeting of the South Haven Planning Commission. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Samantha to read the roll, please.
Michael Campbell.
Here.
Paul Fenton.
Clark Gruber.
Here.
Larry Heineck.
Here.
Mary Hasley.
Here.
Eddie Polk.
Here.
Tim Stegman.
Here.
Janice Farney.
Here.
Bob Sherman.
Here.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as provided?
Move to approve the agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported to approve the agenda as provided. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. And similarly, the approval of the meeting minutes from the meeting of July 10. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from July 10, 2025.
Support.
It's been moved and supported to approve those minutes. Any discussion, comments? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The minutes are approved. Thank you. Public comment, citizens in the audience are welcome to address the planning commission regarding items on the agenda for which there's no scheduled public hearing. We do have a public hearing associated with item number six, the 120 baseline road submission. So if you have a comment about item five, the master plan update, or item eight regarding projecting sign regulations, we'd be very glad to hear your comments.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, we received a request for ADA accommodation, Americans with Disabilities Act, to allow a member of the public to provide public comment. She's unable to be at the meeting, she's unable to attend in person. And so she's watching at home, Gwen Klein, and we've agreed to allow her to speak via phone. And so if it's okay with you, I'd like to do that first.
Absolutely.
So I will call her on speakerphone and put my phone up to the microphone and hope for the best. So bear with me while I dial.
Thank you very much. That's absolutely appropriate, Kelly. Please go ahead and make that call.
I will call now. Hi, Gwen, how are you?
I'm good.
You're on with this planning commission.
Okay.
I'll do my best to mic you. And we'll see how that goes. We're up to public comment on items on the agenda for which there's no scheduled public hearing. And so this would be items five, the master plan update, or item eight regarding projecting signs. And you would have five minutes at this time to make public comment.
Okay, thank you.
Sir Chairman, this is Gwen Klein. Gwen asked me to make the comments for her, so thank you for accommodating her inability to be here. We, Gwen and I, are relatively new property owners and taxpayers in the city of South Haven, and we recently became aware of the proposed change in the city's new draft master plan that I believe deserves serious scrutiny. In the 2018 master plan, the vision for the property formerly occupied by the countryside nursing rehabilitation community was clear. If it became available for redevelopment, it was recommended for single-family land use. And this made sense, the site is surrounded by detached, single-family homes and close to beach amenities. In the new draft master plan, that vision appears to have been squashed. The entire paragraph about redevelopment of the countryside nursing and rehabilitation community was eliminated. And without the red lines of the master plan, this is really hard to see. I can't help but be concerned that this shift is not being driven by the community's vision, but rather by a developer's desire to rezone the property to suit their project. A mobile home park is a far cry from the single-family neighborhood concept outlined in the 2018 master plan, and it could have a lasting impact on the character and the value of this area. So I urge you, as a committee, to look closely at this change. Ask whether this truly reflects the long-term best interests of the South Haven residents or whether it serves the short-term interests of a developer. Until clear, community-supported cases made for such a change, the original 2018 guidance should remain in place. So thank you for your time in protecting the integrity of our city's planning process.
Thank you.
Gwen, Gwen and Mike, thank you very much for your comments. Appreciate them.
And, Mr. Chair, my understanding is they wish to make comments during the public hearing as well, and so we'll call again at that time.
Understand. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right then, any public comments regarding item five on the agenda, the master plan update, or item eight regarding projecting signs? Comments about 120 baseline will be made during the public hearing on that agenda item. So if you'd identify yourself, please, and of course, five minutes of time.
I'm here on item number five. Good evening, members of the South Haven Planning Commission. My name is Jim Wetlawfer. I reside at 3 Oak Court, South Haven, Michigan. I stand before you on behalf of more than two dozen residents from Waters Edge condominiums, Willow Court, and Oak Court in our surrounding neighborhood, taxpaying citizens who feel silenced and sidelined by the proposed update to the 2018 master plan. We come to you with heavy hearts as this proposal, specifically the commercial designation of two small parcels at 89 North Shore Drive and 1 Oak Court, threatens the very character of our residential neighborhood and undermines the principles of fair, community-driven planning. We are not asking for special treatment, we are asking for fairness. Let me be truly clear, our concern is not with Bundy's Bakery, a valued local business that has operated successfully at 89 North Shore Drive for many years. The issue is the proposed change to designate these parcels as commercial on the future land use map, a move that appears to designate solely to benefit one property owner at the expense of our community and broader interests. As the Michigan Supreme Court stated in Pennington versus Owens in 1954, "Creating a small zone of inconsistent use with a larger residential area is spot zoning, a practice that erodes the integrity of comprehensive planning." This is exactly what we fear, spot master planning, an approach that paves the way for future commercial expansion in the heart of our R M one multiple-family residential zone. The neighborhood has always been and should remain residential. Bundy's Bakery does not need this change to thrive. It already operates legally as a prior legal nonconformity, a status upheld by the city's zoning ordinance. So why is there a push for this sneaky maneuver now? I'm sorry, I just don't understand this. Is there anyone here or anyone that needs spot zoning decision now? Or who will benefit from this spot zoning decision? The designation allows the bakery to continue its operations indefinitely without disrupting the neighborhood's character. When the property was purchased years ago, it came with these nonconformity issues, and it should stay with the property. Yet, the proposed updates risk the opening the door to a range of commercial activities under the B one Neighborhood Business Zoning District, activities that could transform our quiet, family-friendly streets into something unrecognizable. The drafts from the minutes of your July 10, 2025, meeting confirm this change is intended to bring Bundy's into conformance, but at what cost? And that 1 Oak Court was excluded from the commercial classifications. I still am unclear if that holds true to this moment. Nearly every public comment on this proposal has opposed it, reflecting a clear community consensus that you have so far overlooked. Our neighborhood is more than just plots of land, they are sanctuaries where we raise our families, build our lives, and invest our hard-earned money. The planning process that prioritizes one business over the well-being of dozens of residents contradicts this goal. Any commercial designation will lower our surrounding property values. Who wants to live next to a commercial piece of property? We are not asking for special treatment, we are asking for fairness. By pushing for this commercial designation, you risk setting a dangerous precedent. The master plan is meant to guide South Haven's future, not to rewrite it for one-off exemptions. I strongly request you reject this commercial designation in the master plan update. I urge you to listen to our community and voices, respect the residential character of our neighborhood, and engage in transparent, inclusive planning process that honors the expectations of all those who call South Haven home. Please do the right thing. Halt this proposed designation. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Jim.
My name is Philip Rome. My wife and I reside at 95 Willow Court. I stand before you again, asking you once more not to designate Bundy's Bakery and Cafe property at 89 North Shore Drive as a commercial property in the 2025 master plan. To my knowledge, you have not been asked by one single resident in our neighborhood to designate the parcel as such. Doing so opens the door for countless types of businesses in our small, historical neighborhood. A commercial property without limitations serves none of us. However, it is self-serving for the current owner of the property and to the future owner of the property should the property be sold. Existing property does a thriving, stand-in-line business at its current designation. Yes, we know that this is not the zoning committee, and it is not the zoning of the property, the rezoning of the property at 89 North Shore Drive. However, we do know that if you leave the designation as commercial, it throws the door wide open for the city council to approve it, and then for the zoning committee to authorize the request for a change in zoning. I believe our attorney, Matt Van Dyke, wrote to you about something called "spot master planning leading to spot zoning." He stated in part, "This runs counter to planning principles, the very principles on which the entire notion of master planning and zoning are based, and even contradicts the intent of the Michigan Planning Enabling Act." Furthermore, it appears that you have not been completely upfront with us related to the property at number one Oak Court. You have told us in open session at one of these meetings that that parcel is not included in the commercial designation. However, we are not seeing in writing that it is not, and it does not appear that it is, it does appear that it's included in the master land use map. Please define in writing what is the designation of 1 Oak Court parcel, of the 1 Oak Court parcel. Please, we implore you, do not pass a tough decision to the next group. Make the decision to support all of the people of Wow, Woodman Oak, and Willow, and our historical neighborhood. Do not designate 89 North Shore Drive as a commercial property. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
I'm John Bussumah. I live at 3 Willow Court, along with my wife Diane, who is here tonight. We come, we are opposed to the plan changes for the Bundy Bakery property. At the last meeting, I believe it was a month ago, you specifically told us that 1 Oak Court was not part of this package. And now we are in doubt, we don't have maps that are clear, we have not been informed in any way that 1 Oak Court is not part of it. We want to know specifically the status of that property. Then, we want to express our opposition to the proposed designation of 89 North Shore as commerce in the master plan. It is contrary to good planning goals. It will invite an expanded and potentially problematic commercial-spot zoning problem in the middle of the residential neighborhood. To my knowledge, one person has come before this group and been in favor of it, and that was the owner of Bundy's Bakery. Everyone else is opposed. The overwhelming public comments on this proposed change have been in opposition. You are not listening to what the community is saying. My wife and I urge this planning commission to reject this proposal involving 89 North Shore Drive. Thank you.
Thanks very much for your comments.
My name is Nancy Barnes, and I'm the Quality Assurance and Regulatory Affairs Manager at the W R Grace Facility in South Haven. I'm a proud lifelong citizen of this community and equally proud to have spent the entirety of my career over the last 29 years at this manufacturing site. W R Grace sent a letter in advance of this meeting to the planning commission and city staff, but we also wanted to take the opportunity to read it aloud. Dear members of the South Haven Planning Commission, we are writing on behalf of W R Grace and approximately 200 employees at our South Haven site located at 1421 Kalamazoo Street to respectfully express our concerns regarding proposed zoning changes outlined in the 2025 master plan update. Since 1976, this manufacturing site has played a vital role in the local economy, contributing significantly to the tax base, providing hundreds of jobs over the decades, and supporting the community through charitable and civic engagement. Grace has been a committed partner in the economic development of South Haven, and in 2024, we completed a major investment into our existing facility to support continued innovation, operational excellence, and growth. This investment reflects our ongoing dedication to the community and our long-term plans to expand and contribute locally. While we do not wish to delay progress on implementation of the 2025 master plan, we seek what we believe is a minor update to the proposed future land use map to reflect zoning that is commensurate with our current classifications. Grace owns significant and contiguous landmass in the area, and it is important that all parcels, including newly acquired ones, be aligned consistently to avoid future uncertainties that could impact continuity of existing operations and pose significant risk to future expansion planning. Grace owns three parcels bordering M 140 Highway that are proposed for reclassification under the updated future land use map. Two of these parcels, parcel ID 8053-272-11400 and 8053-272-00500, recently acquired to support future expansion of our R and D and office footprint, are currently zoned as B two general business. Reclassifying them as mixed-use as proposed raises concerns about potential restrictions that could hinder our long-term investment plans and limit our ability to grow in alignment with our business objectives at this location. We respectfully request that these two parcels be reclassified to match the zoning of our existing operations, industrial, research, and technology. The third parcel, parcel ID number 8053-272-00800, which also borders M 140 Highway, is currently home to our state-of-the-art analytical services lab and is zoned as light industrial. Staffed by approximately nine full-time analytical chemists, the lab plays a critical role in ensuring the quality and safety of the pharmaceutical ingredients we manufacture. The proposed reclassification to mixed-use appears incompatible with this essential function and introduces uncertainty and could jeopardize ongoing operations and pose risks to future investment and growth at this location. We respectfully request that this parcel also be reclassified to match the zoning of our existing operations, industrial, research, and technology. In summary, we ask the planning commission and city council members to adjust the 2025 master plan update to classify the three Grace-owned parcels as industrial, research, and technology, consistent with our current operations and future plans for the site. We are eager to work with you to find a path forward that supports the city's goals, Grace's ongoing operations, and future investment plans, and the continued economic vitality and growth of the South Haven business community. Thank you for your time and consideration on this important matter.
Thanks very much for your comments.
My name is Wayne Pacina. Live at 259 Brockway. Excuse me, I retired here in 2018 full-time. I own a small piece of property on the west side of M 140, just north of the Grace Chemical Plant entrance. Purchased in 2021 and permitted for two storage buildings with South Haven Township in 2021. My property is most recognizable at Christmas with my classic truck out front with a lighted tree in the back. Just wanted everybody to know where it was, that's all. My property, along with a spattering of other parcels along M 140, were moved to the city on January 1, 2022, under the 425 Plan. This move changed my zoning from CSC to B two. Storage buildings are not allowed under B two, changing my property value and original development intent dramatically. Since approved and permitted with the township, I completed one of my buildings in 2022 under township inspections. I recently requested and want to vote in the city, five to two, to go back to the township as the summary des project parcel was approved to be returned to the township for similar zoning reasons. The South Haven Township discussion and vote to accept my property back to the township is scheduled for the 13th of this month. Although optimistic, I assume this has a chance of not being approved with the township. Hence, my speaking here today in regards to the proposed master plan of making all 425 planned properties on M 140 mixed-use zoning. Before I go any further, I do have one question. I'm B two now, and I've been told it remains B two. If the master plan changes it to future mixed-use, can it be changed later to something other than that? And if yes, what is that process? Or is the mixed-use, that's it, and there's no further? You know, if anybody wants to chime in?
The future land map doesn't change anything.
Okay, I know that.
So you can change at some future to some other designation.
Something other than mixed-use?
Correct.
Okay, what's that process?
You would apply for a rezoning.
Really? Okay.
But, I mean, we're not magically requiring that. It's a future land use. That's what we think it should be, but you're probably going to be on the 13th in the township, and that would be moot, correct?
Yes, it would.
Okay.
Right, that's what I'm hoping. In the city's master plan document, the purpose of mixed-use zoning is to, and I quote, "Provide for a mix of uses, including retail, office, service, and residential uses that enhance accessibility, walkability, and common vibrancy while remaining compatible with adjacent residential areas." I guess I have to ask the question, has anybody with input on master plan ever actually spent any quality time on this corridor? Other than two houses on M 140, there is no residential area within at least a quarter mile of the M 140 corridor north of Blue Star Highway. This has always been a commercial business area. Businesses that remain in the township, scattered within these city properties along this road, include a flower shop, two auto parts stores, and an HVAC contractor. Parcels transferred to the city in the 425 agreement, along with mine, include the two parcels north of me, now both owned by Grace Chemical, and the Grace Chemical Office and Commercial Towing Company directly south of me. There's an antique shop across the street and one empty parcel south of that, owned by Scott Parker, which is presently for sale. I'm reminded of a person I used to work with, when presented with a directive, would always ask, "What is the ultimate goal?" Mixed-use is not the best zoning, future zoning for the area. You will be restricting potential businesses and your city's largest employer, possibly impacting job creation, and also...
Wayne, I hate to interrupt you, but your time is up.
Oh, it is? Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Well, I want to thank you all for your time and for listening, and for the job you do. God knows I don't want to do it. Thanks.
And I'm going to reiterate something Clark said, because I think it's appropriate, and I'm concerned that there could be some misunderstandings, and I'm going to ask Kelly to keep me on the straight and narrow, and Nathan, our city attorney, as well. Designations in the future land use map within the master plan do not change zoning. They simply indicate what may be appropriate use in the future, hence future land use map. But it does not change zoning. Correct, Kelly? Nathan, would you support that?
Short answer is yes, that's correct.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Chairman, if I may, I think the question that Mr. Pacino was asking is if his property stays in the city, and it's currently zoned business, and the future land use map changes to future mixed-use, can he then file to rezone to industrial? And I believe that the answer to that question would be, he could, but the future land use map would not support it, so it would most likely be denied. He would have more success going to mixed-use. I think that's what, what does the future land, how does the future land use map control future use of that property?
I don't know of a single project where, because it was a future land map, that a rezoning request did not get the full attention and potentially even change. So I don't think that's necessarily a true statement that it can't be. We have someone else here who wants to do a rezoning of a property to MHC, and, you know, that's never been on the future map for that property, so no.
So MHC is a very new zoning ordinance, so I would ask that the attorney answer my question, please.
Okay. Nathan, please.
Happy to answer the question if desired, although, Mr. Chairman, I might suggest that you continue with, this is the public comment portion of the meeting. It would, in my opinion, be more appropriate to allow public comment to continue. This is probably something that should be brought up under new business or items from planning commissioners so that the public can make their comments. That being said, if you would like me to answer that, I will.
Please, if you would. Your point is well-taken, and I respect that, but if you would, please.
If you could briefly, through the chair to Commissioner Hasley, briefly restate the question for me.
Sure. So if the future land use map gives mixed-use and the current zoning is commercial, what is the likelihood of successfully rezoning to industrial, different than what the future land use map recommends, and different from the current zoning?
So the future land use map and consistency with the master plan is one factor to be considered during a rezoning request. Without having a specific rezoning request, I can't give an answer on the likelihood, and it would depend on the specifics of that request, you know, whether it's a conventional rezoning request, a conditional rezoning request, and what the applicant had provided in terms of rationale for the rezoning request. Additionally, the way that the master plan process works and then transitions into zoning is typically after the master plan, you would then adjust your zoning ordinance to align with the master plan. So something that would be relevant here is, was a broader mixed-use district created or enacted in this area, and that could influence the likelihood of success on a rezoning of a specific parcel within that district. So without having... So, without having a, a full, full knowledge of the circumstances surrounding the properties at the time and the request, I can't really give an answer on likelihood of success.
Well, we'll see.
I think the answer is, it's not clear.
Correct, yes.
Too many unknowns to, to really offer an opinion, but thank you very much, and we'll go back to public comments. Other comments on items five or eight on the agenda?
You're in luck. I don't have a piece of paper. My name is Helen Tosin, and I have-
You're Mike.
Oh. My name is Helen Tosin, and I have been at Number 5 Oak Court for 54 years. And it has always been predominantly residential, except when Bundy's was Brislowski's deli. It's been a wonderful place for neighborhood. I ask that, just common sense, I've sent letters, I'm sure you're saying, oh my God, here she is again. But I'm so opposed to it. If you drive by Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, you can see the traffic problems, the sidewalk problems, uh, just with Bundy's. If you expand that, it's going to be a bigger problem. You'll destroy the integrity of the neighborhood. And I ask that, if you lived in those areas, would you want this to happen? Thank you.
And I'm often one of those people in the line trying to get a coffee and a cinnamon roll, so I understand what you're saying.
Hello? I'm Keith Kelenowski. My wife and I have been in South Haven for the last 30 years. And I wrote a letter, um, to city council, the city manager, and the planning administrator, and it was just in support of the Hesley draft suggested changes to the 2025 master plan update. And included, uh, comments on page 64, 67, 69, and 142. I'm not going to read what those changes are, but I'm assuming that you have that all in your, uh, notes. I also want to comment, uh, one of the, uh, audience participants, uh, talked about the walkability proposed in the master plan. Uh, I walk everywhere in this city. Uh, I use my car once a week to go grocery shopping and walk everywhere. And the, in the 30 years that we've been here, we've noticed a number of old oak trees and other oak, other trees that have been knocked down. The most recent case is, uh, where the nursing home was on Baseline Road. It's, it's terrible to see the destruction that's gone, uh, uh, in the city, especially of the old-growth trees. What I don't see, and, uh, is the replanting of trees to compensate for this destruction. And in order to make the city more walkable, and especially in the summertime, is to shade the walkways, shade the sidewalks, uh, with more, uh, trees, uh, to be planted along the parkways, so that the city is much more livable and much more walkable and more comfortable. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
My name is Kim Rome, and I live at 95 Willow Court. My husband and I have sent numerous letters regarding our interest in not having Bundy's future planned for commercial. And even though you're saying it's not zoning, you also said that, you know, what it does is show that that's the plan for it, and so why would the zoning board ever turn down a request? Our big concern is what it will do to our neighborhood. We are a residential neighborhood. We're not spots on a map, we're people. You know, you're looking at lines, but there are people who live in those lines. And, um, so we are very, very opposed to having that future designation as commercial. The other thing that we're concerned about is, we consulted our attorney, was that we have been told One Oak Court was not part of the future designation with Bundy's. However, it has never been in writing. In fact, at the July 10th meeting, which minutes disappeared before tonight. But it, it only, the only adjustment made to the master plan was for typographical errors, and it didn't actually state that One Oak Court was removed, so we're very interested in having that show in writing. And, um, again, I want you to know that we are residents, we live here, we do not want Bundy's future plan for commercial. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Anyone else? All right, then, following our, our longstanding tradition, thanks to Mr. Stegman, we have a rather lengthy, uh, log of communications, and I'll try to read through them somewhat briefly without, uh, implying anything. So, uh, comments from, and I hope I'll pronounce the name right, Mary Maiarano, in opposition to changes at 120 Baseline. Um, Sharon Craig on North Shore Drive, also opposition to the Baseline, uh, Road changes. Uh, Bob Feeney wrote about, uh, just questions regarding the potential changes at 120 Baseline. Jerry and Kathy Molitor wrote about, uh, opposition changes to 89 North Shore Drive. Uh, we received a, a letter from an attorney representing, uh, residents in that area on Water's Edge and Oak Court in opposition to changes to 89 North Shore. Um, uh, Susan Shields communicated regarding changes or potential changes to 120 Baseline. We received, uh, another letter from an attorney, Emily Palacios of Miller Johnson, with concerns regarding potential conflicts of interest. We had communication from Jim and Rachel Sankowski in favor of changes to 89 North Shore Drive. Todd and Margaret Kepphardt in opposition to changes at 89 North Shore Drive. Um, and Frank Bomarito from WR Grayson Company, uh, with concerns regarding the 2025 master plan update. I'm going to try to shorten this a little bit by saying, all of the following are in opposition to changes at 120 Baseline Road, and I'll identify the, uh, the citizen communicating, but these will all be in opposition to changes at 120 Baseline. Margaret Bath from North Shore Drive, Gay Mineke, I hope I'm pronouncing that correct, also on North Shore Drive, George and Beverly Ebersole on North Shore Drive, uh, Kim Rome on, uh, I'm sorry, that one was in regard to 89 North Shore Drive, not Baseline, excuse me on that. Craig and Penny Massey opposed to 120 Baseline, Linda, Linda Albury also opposed to 120 Baseline. Um, and again, I'll go back to all related to 120 Baseline. Michael and Patricia McKinnis opposed to changes at 120 Baseline. Mark and Jean Schupan likewise, John Duda, uh, on North Shore Drive, opposition to changes at Baseline. Joe Lineback on Woodbridge Circle. Margot and Brad Shaw on Webster Avenue. John Albury on North Shore Drive, opposition to changes at 120 Baseline. Jennifer Durkey on Webster Avenue opposed. Mary Ellen Keith on North Shore Drive, opposed to those changes. Anne Pantalone on, uh, North Shore Drive, opposed to those changes. Uh, Eugenie Crotty on Webster, in favor of changes to 120 Baseline. Uh, Richard Fleming on North Shore Drive, opposition to Baseline. Carlos Stivers on Webster, 136 Webster, opposed to changes at Baseline. Uh, Linda Albury on North Shore Drive, opposition to changes at 120 Baseline. Dan O'Connell, also on North Shore Drive, opposition to changes at 120 Baseline. Gwen Klein, opposition to changes at 120 Baseline, and Gwen also commented, as you heard on the phone, uh, with, uh, questions about the master plan. Mike Klein, as you also heard, uh, spoke about that, and also communicated in regard, uh, opposition to changes at 120 Baseline. Jim and Jenny Nicholson opposed to changes at 120 Baseline. And then, one communication with, I'm going to say nearly 40 letters from citizens strongly in support of 120 Baseline, including, um, Patty, Dale Reed in favor of changes at 120 Baseline, Patty Nielsen in favor of those changes, Mike Schnurr, uh, in favor of changes at 120 Baseline, uh, Thomas McCreary in favor of those changes, uh, Remy Rubin in favor of changes, Haime Benporat in favor of changes at 120 Baseline, David Wiatrowski likewise, Carol Silverman likewise, Eric Rothner in favor of those changes, Don Tollendorf on Kentucky Avenue in favor of those changes, Carmen Fitch on Kentucky Avenue as well, uh, in favor, Carol Kozla in favor of those changes, Ed Crotty in favor of changes at 120 Baseline, John Frost on Maple Street in favor of those changes, John Klunk on Kentucky Avenue in favor of those changes, James Hawley on Maple Street in favor of those changes, James McTheany in favor of changes at Baseline, Josh McTheany in favor of changes at 120 Baseline, Travis Gominski in favor of those changes, Chavy Steinfeld in favor of those changes, Matt O'Sullivan in favor of changes at 120 Baseline, Lisa Flores in favor, Katie Muskowitz in favor of changes, Brad Schloss in favor of those changes, Mark Young in favor, Mike Dubink in favor of those changes, Linda Shinsky in favor, Josh, couldn't make out the last name on that, Josh on North Shore Drive in favor of those changes, Kim Rudolph in favor of the changes, Anthony Martorano in favor of the changes at Baseline, Lisa Vales in favor of the changes, Adam Vales, they were both on Oakway, by the way, Arnie Zuckerman on Broadway in favor of the changes, Daniel Shear on North Shore Drive in favor of the changes, Robert White in favor of the changes, uh, Devora Viser in favor of the changes, Samuel Viser in favor of the changes, Roy Burson on Broadway in favor of the changes, Julia Dubold, uh, 220 Broadway in favor of those changes, Chad Raven on Lee Street in favor of those changes, Rosie Langston in favor of the changes at 120 Baseline, Joseph Williams likewise in favor. Terry and Bill Dawson communicated in regard to the master plan in opposition to changes at 89 North Shore Drive. Uh, that's our best effort at getting them all identified, and, uh, a round of applause for Kelly and Samantha for pulling all those together. Uh, we do read everything that comes in here. Uh, Kelly is very fastidious about forwarding those to, um, planning commission members. Uh, so that's our communication log for tonight. Did I miss anything, Kelly?
I hope not, but let us know if, if something was missed, and we'll get it-
Exactly. The, 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 the numbers of communications was very, very significant, as you could tell, and we do read them, and we appreciate them, and we note them as carefully as we can. Yes, ma'am.
I was trying to cross everything off. Did you get Terry and Bill Dawson for the master plan?
Uh, I don't honestly know. I'd have to go down the list. What were the names again?
Uh, Terry and Bill Dawson for the master plan.
Oh, perhaps not, so.
And, um, I had Richard Fleming, I don't, like I said, I tried to cross them off as quickly as possible, and Carlos Stiver, they were both opposed to 120 Baseline.
Okay, thanks for those additions. Any others that I might have missed?
And then I had submitted something with regard to, um, issues with the application for 120 Baseline.
Okay. Um, moving on then, uh, item five, I'm sorry. 120 Baseline Road will, uh, be the subject of a public hearing just on that topic, and there'll be an opportunity to make your comments regarding that item at that time. True enough, perhaps I ought to have saved those, but our tradition has been, uh, that we read those right after that first segment, so. Well, can you wait, though, please, till we discuss that item as, uh, item six on the agenda? Well, my apologies if it's out of order, but-
Mr. Chair, if I can clarify for, clarify for the public, the planning commission's bylaws state that all public, all written public comment that is received are to be read by the chair during the public comment period. However, if public comment is being given orally at the planning commission meeting, that is to be reserved for the public hearing on that item. So that is the reason why written public comments about 120 Baseline were read by the chair during the overall public comment portion of the meeting. That's pursuant to the planning commission's bylaws.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Well, then, we'll move on to item five, master plan update, and we have a potential resolution of approval. Kelly, would you like to kick that off, please? Or some backstory on that?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. At last month's meeting, um, on July 10th, the planning commission held a public hearing on the 2025 master plan, or updates to the master plan, and directed staff to prepare a resolution for approval of the plan, um, to be ready for this meeting. So, um, staff has done that. Uh, Michigan Planning Enabling Act requires the planning commission to approve the master plan. In South Haven, the city council has, uh, also reserved the right to, um, to final adoption of the plan, and so, uh, we have prepared a resolution for you that, um, for the planning commission's consideration that would approve the master plan and recommend that city council adopt the plan.
Okay, and this, uh, master plan update process has a long history, does it not? It's been through many, many updates and much input solicited and received, and it's been, uh, published for comment?
Correct. We have taken all of the required steps to, um, publish the plan for the required, um, 63-day comment period. Uh, we have been reviewing the plan for approximately 18 months. Um, as you all, I'm sure remember, the intent was to, um, update the 2018 plan. We received grant funding to do that. Um, and the 2018 plan was a very thorough update, it was a brand-new plan, and the point was to update that plan with a coastal lens and to add some housing verbiage. So we've done those things, and we've brought an approval resolution for your consideration. I know there were some public comments made tonight about the plan. If there are further amendments that the commission wishes to make, um, that would certainly, um, fall under your purview to do so, um, and if not, the resolution is available for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Discussion, comments?
Guess we can start with a resolution and then see where that takes us. I'd make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-3, Resolution approving and recommending adoption of the 2025 updates to the City of South Haven master plan.
Support. All right, it's been moved and supported to approve the resolution as provided by staff. Discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Um, I would like to, uh, discuss a couple of things that relate specifically to the future use map, uh, both of which were mentioned tonight. Um, we have the property at 89 North Shore, uh, first of all, and we've had the discussion, and first of all, Kelly, can we confirm for the folks in the audience that One Oak Court has in fact been removed from the future use map as commercial?
We did ask the consultants to remove the parcel from the map. I've been told that they did. However, I did not make the map, and so that's the best assurance that I can give.
Okay, and that was based on the action we took in July?
Yes, they, well, based on prior action. That parcel was removed from the map some time ago.
So may the, may the minutes of this meeting reflect specifically that One Oak Court is no longer part of the commercial designation on the future use map?
Yes, we can make that.
Okay, that's the first thing. The second thing is, the, we received materials, um, which included, um, a Miller Johnson legal opinion, or memo, uh, that was distributed to us. It was dated August 4th. Uh, it was copied to our, the office of our city attorney. My next question is- My next question is, has the city attorney discussed this with you and advised you as to any steps that we should take with respect to that commercial designation?
I think the most appropriate thing, if we've got specific questions, would be to ask them of the city attorney since he's here.
That's fine, I gave you the first choice, so I'm happy to conduct with the attorney. So do you have a response to the Miller Johnson memorandum with respect to the 89 North Shore future use designation and the spot zoning issue and the risk that this would pose to the city?
Yes, I'll give a brief answer, and then if you have more specific questions or follow-up questions, feel free to ask those. The, the letter from the attorneys referenced that this would be spot master planning is the phrase that they used. That's not a term that is used in a legal community. There is a term called spot zoning, and that is where you have a small zone of inconsistent use within a larger zone. Spot zoning is generally frowned upon in the planning and zoning community, but it is not per se illegal. The question when you have a small area of use that is inconsistent with the surrounding uses as a result of a rezoning is, you know, whether or not the, whether or not the planning commission and the legislative body had acted consistently with the Planning Enabling Act and the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. The ultimate question is, do the facts and circumstances of the rezoning indicate a valid exercise of the zoning power that the municipality has? And what are the valid exercises of the zoning power? That's defined in the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, specifically MCL 125.3203. Key among those powers are whether a rezoning advances the public health, safety, morals, or general welfare. So those are the factors that you would look at when determining whether something that could be considered a spot zone is appropriate. Are there circumstances for a rezoning that would be consistent with any of those things? Again, public health, safety, morals, or general welfare. And if it is, then there might be reasons to engage in a rezoning that some might consider to be a spot zone, but it's going to be very fact-specific based on those circumstances.
So with respect to what we did in terms of putting a future use map value of commercial on this particular property, everything is above board in terms of the Michigan Planning Enabling Act and what we did?
Yeah, there is no, you know, there's, there is no vested right in having a property designated a certain way in the master plan. By designating a property as commercial, if that's what the planning commission chooses to do, that would provide the planning commission with guidance should a rezoning request come in in the future. You would then know that the planning commission and the city council thought that it was appropriate for that property to be used as a commercial property. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean that it has to be rezoned to B1 broadly. The city, you know, planning commissioner, city council might have concerns about a broad rezoning to B1, so they may suggest to the applicant that they propose a conditional rezoning. And obviously, it's up to the applicant to offer those conditions. But just because something is designated as commercial in the master plan doesn't mean that you have to broadly allow all commercial uses at the time that a rezoning request comes in.
The second designation is actually the WR Grace letter requesting that those additional parcels be noted on the future use map with the same designation. Is that something that can be done via an amendment tonight? Or is that something that we should be considering out of this meeting and then coming back with a proposal?
So I, I mean, that's ultimately up to the planning commission how to proceed. You have not approved the master plan, so you can still amend it. I guess I didn't quite follow the second half of the question. I mean, if you, if you approve the master plan tonight, it would then go to city council, and at that point, you wouldn't be able to amend it without going through the entire process of updating the master plan. So if, if there's a desire to make a change there tonight or a postponement to a future meeting would be my suggestion.
And so what I would, then my question to Kelly, I think I asked you this earlier, but we'll do it in open session. If we were to make changes to either one of those or both on the future use map, would we need to then conduct another public hearing at the planning commission before sending it on to city council?
No, my, no, because you would be making changes in response to public comment received on the plan, which is the purpose of receiving the comment.
I would, I would like to hear other commissioners' comments about amending either or both of those values on the future use map with respect to 89 North Shore as well as the WR Grace properties noted in their letter.
I think 89, we already had a change that we're looking at that would be a correction. So I'm, I'm good with how 89 reads in the master plan. WR Grace, again, they would be allowed to do that, but I think we have new information that I guess I wouldn't mind if someone wanted to put together an amendment just on that property. I, I would be amenable to that.
Go ahead, Mary.
Yeah, and I think it would also, it would not, it would be not to just the future land use map, but the related text in the master plan itself. So my very basic question first is, now that the resolution is in front of us, can we make amendments? Or do we need to table the motion for the resolution? Procedurally, what's the most appropriate way to handle amendments with the motion for the resolution?
Well, my question would be, what text would need to be amended?
So at least with regard to the 425 agreement, the text in the, on page 69 would need some minor corrections because they're talking about mixed use. I respectfully disagree that the text for 89 North Shore Drive is sufficient. I would recommend the text on page 67 be clarified that the rezoning would, that the master plan actually facilitate conditional rezoning so that the intensity of the rezoning would be commensurate with the current use that has existed over many years. Because once you identify something as commercial, anything allowed under that zoning district would be allowed on that site. And that is exactly what the biggest concern is for the residents living around there. And the paragraph with regard to that section says that the businesses moved out slowly. Some of them, I know people have taken issue with that. I take issue with that. It does not accurately represent how things changed over there. It's just they are now gone. The city had made a decision that it would be all residential. When it was rezoned at that point in time, they carved out an exception for the bakery and allowed bakeries in the RM1. But we now, we were told through the master plan update process that that is not the proper way to do it. It should be rezoned commercial. And I do appreciate the fact that they did include the B1 neighborhood business zoning district. And I would ask for guidance from legal. Can we add more clarification in there such that future uses would be commensurate with the current use as a bakery?
So, Mr. Chairman, I guess if I can answer Commissioner Hozley's first question from back before Kelly commented, the answer is yes, you can amend the master plan tonight because the master plan is being included as an exhibit, you can amend the exhibit. That being said, to the extent that there are any, you would need to amend it with precise language, not giving guidance to staff because this is not coming back. So you, you would have to have the exact wording that you want on the master plan tonight to do that. To answer your second question, the planning commission has broad latitude to provide guidance with respect to its comments on the future land use. So yes, if you wanted to express parameters for how you believe some commercial designated on the future land use map should eventually be developed, that the planning commission can do that in the narrative of the master plan.
And I also know that there were some comments submitted with regard to the nursing home. And Kelly did clarify to me that other changes other than what we had discussed at the last meeting included the amendment that I had proposed striking reference to the countryside nursing home on page 64, so that one has already been done. But as has been stated in public comment and written submissions with regard to the 120 baseline property, all the strikings have removed a lot of work, or I should, removed work that was based on, as we've heard tonight, a lot of input. There was a lot of public input from that. This has really been focused more on coastal resilience and just doing some minor updates. And with the striking of material that was based on a lot of input, aspects of that part of our community have not been accurately retained. And so I, I would have potential amendments to that area also based on comments.
All right, other comments, discussion?
Just with regard to the manufactured housing community, so that occurs on page 71, and it says that the city has none in our jurisdiction. We do, it's a new zoning district, so of course, we don't have any. But if you look at our zoning map and you look at different parcels, there are two locations in our city that have manufactured housing community by de facto. So, and they are in the B3 zoning district. It is the property behind the depot, and it's also the property at 875 East Wells Basin Park. So the Miller Bureau at 619 Conjur and Basin Park at 875 East Wells, those are de facto manufactured housing communities. And so to say that we do not have any, it's correct to the fact that we don't have any that are that zoned, but B3 seems much more amenable for manufactured housing communities considering that is the zoning district that we currently have some in if they wanted to rezone. So I would make that clarification. That's, that would be on page 71. And I can, I'm prepared to make specific amendments to that effect.
Other comments?
Yes, I, I am concerned that although we may have the right to put things in the master plan that limits a future planning commission on what might be constructed in a certain zoning district commercial, I don't think it's a good idea. This planning commission, when we look at commercial zoning, makes a decision on what's happening right now, what's happening in the area, what the economy is now, and all of those things that go into making that decision. If we write something in this master plan, that is going to make those decisions for that planning commission five years or twenty years down the road. And I don't think that's a good idea. We have to trust the people who will be in these chairs when that decision is made. And I don't believe that there's a planning commission that will be seated here in this city that's going to say that it's time for Bundy's to explain and we're going to allow it to be commercial right to the property line. That's not going to happen. And I don't think that we should be putting, tying their hands on other decisions that they might make by putting it in the master plan.
Go ahead, Tim.
I think you've heard me mention several times before, if you look at our zoning, historically, we've had, the original was simply commercial and residential. And if you look at that original map, you take the north end of the North Beach all the way to Dykeman and North Shore Drive and then west of North Shore Drive, the majority of that was commercial. So in a way, I heard somebody tonight say it's spot zoning, whereas I think you've actually had residential encroachment allowing for a commercial island that's left. And if you further look at the south end of, of the drive, you used to have Channel One Restaurant, Mariners Inn, which later became Three Pelicans, Pancake House. And I think it's, was planned in, you know, in, in this document that once those cease to exist, there is to become residential. So I think in essence, what we're hearing from everybody, even though there's a line and they like going to Bundy's Bakery, the hope is that eventually that too will cease to exist. Because by not allowing this, if Bundy's were to continue to be a good business, they probably would want to expand a little bit in that location. And by turning that away, that, that couldn't happen. So I would tend to agree with Larry. And like I said, it's not spot zoning. That, that's the last commercial piece left from the original zoning.
Go ahead, Mike.
I would like to make a motion to amend the original motion with respect to the WR Grace property. And Kelly, I'm going to need your help with this. The motion would be to amend, the main motion, to change the future land use map designations to all be industrial? Is that the correct designation, Kelly?
Industrial is a, a land use category that is available, yes.
And in, in, industrial research and technology or not, is not a category that we have, right? It's just industrial.
It, it is industrial research and technology.
Perfect, and that would be the, and that would be the motion. And I have the documentation here if you need to update numbers. Samantha?
I would support, and I, I do have a question. I just, could we pull the future land use map updates in the current draft of? Yes. So can you confirm, Mike, that the parcels you spoke of? Kelly, can you identify what parcels are on there? That, that were read?
On this map, it's harder. We'll have to have the consultants do it behind the scenes using the parcel layers. But this area that's outlined in purple is, and beyond here is the WR Grace property. These parcels are north, I believe, of this parcel of, of the existing gray. If you'll give me just a moment here.
I was just wondering if it might not be easier and if you was.
So here's a parcel level map, and this wooded parcel is the 272-114 parcel.
I'm just, what is south of the drive? What I'm getting at is if you, yeah, if you could just leave the map up. So all of the property that is on either side of the Grace. property that is on either side of the Grace, WR Grace driveway, so, south of the white section.
Yeah, this white section here is township, so...
Right, but I'm saying if all of that property is south of that. Because I was able to connect with WR Grace with regard to the future land use map, I was unable to con, connect with property owners south of their driveway. And they may be of a similar opinion, and that in the current future land use map is In our current 2018 master plan.
They are, in the, in the 2018 plan, they were likely designated as industrial.
No, I know they were. And that is why I would, I supported Mike's motion to keep this on, but I, I would move to amend that the, the, the lots that would be industrial would be the four-twenty-five property that is south of the white township. Because, so all of that part would be industrial. So that it would be consistent with what was being requested of WR Grace, Mr. Pacina, and consistent with the current future land use map.
So is that a separate motion, or are you intending to amend Mike's motion?
So I would move to amend Mike's motion to expand...
Wait, we can, wait, second to Mike, did we get, oh, you did. You did, Mary seconded Mike's motion, yes, yes. Mary, you're suggesting amending Mike's motion, is that...
Yeah, because he just read off specific parcels.
Yes.
And I would prefer to see all of that, all of the property that is WR Grace, north of the driveway, be industrial, and all of the properties south that is currently in the future land use map is industrial, being industrial. I mean, you can always rezone, I think there's more support to rezone something less than what is in the future land use map, but the industrial is the most intense. And, as I've said, although we are not required to give notice to property owners of future land use map, specific personal notice, just with our smaller community, and changing that from industrial to mixed use, I'm, I'm not supportive of that. I would, and if we're amending the future land use map with regard to the WR Grace, to me it makes sense to amend that whole section that was identified to be mixed use.
Mr. Chairman, so does this second, by Commissioner Hosley, stand? And so we at least vote on this?
I, I would say, yes, it does stand.
If it gets a second.
There was no support.
If it gets a second.
Mary, Mary seconded the motion, I, I guess...
Yeah, but not her, but then she made a...
Mary seconded Mike's original amendment, I believe.
Correct, and then Mary made another motion to amend Mike's motion, which has not yet been supported.
Hearing no support for that, then I think we can move on to Mike's original motion. Is there discussion of Mike's motion as supported?
I just want to, I just want to close by saying that I'm trying to address the request of one business in this town, and that, that was the limitation of my motion.
And I think that's entirely appropriate, so. Any other discussion?
What would be a reason not to do it?
What would be a reason not to do what?
Not to change the future land use map.
Kelly, who requested this mixed use?
The Planning Commission, as a group, discussed this together during the public meetings where we discussed the four-twenty-five area, the M-140 corridor, and, and that was the decision that was made by this body.
But was there any entity that brought it forward to make it mixed use? Because it came to us as mixed use.
The, the group asked for that designation during a public meeting, yes.
For instance, will it be more difficult to attain future grants for that corridor, for example?
I think that's, I can't speculate about future grants based on mixed use. I know several months ago, there was a housing development proposed for the parcel that was, that is no longer part of this four-twenty-five agreement area near the senior center, and that may have been the spark for this conversation, but my recollection is that this was a group I don't remember any specific request from any one property for this designation. It was a group, it was a conversation that the group had.
So, so Mike would, I'm just concerned that if Mr. Pacina's property is not removed, because we don't know that, and we have to make the decision now, there would be that little blip of mixed use between industrial and industrial. It's just not contiguous. And so, at a, at the, at a minimum, I would request that, that other parcel, and Kelly, if you could give me the parcel number, I would read that off, but that the parcel for Mr. Pacina be included in industrial such that that contiguous piece that's in the future land use map would all be the same.
And might I suggest that, given there may be differences of opinion as to who would like to support one versus the other, that we take them as separate amendments?
Sure.
We could vote on this one, and then you can make an amendment.
I agree.
I'd be happy to second yours, and then we can have a discussion on it.
That works fine, thank you.
So I think it's been moved and seconded, and I think we've had adequate discussion. I think we're prepared to vote. Samantha, could you do a roll call, please, on, this is on Mike's amendment, specifically the three parcels he identified, to change their designation on the future land use map from mixed use to industrial research and technology? Do I have that right, Kelly?
Campbell?
Yes.
Gruber?
Yes.
Heineck?
Yes.
Hosley?
Yes.
Polk?
Yes.
Segman?
Yes.
Varney?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
I would move to amend the future land use map to include the property of Mr. Pacina as industrial research and technology.
Second.
Mr. Chair, before it gets to discussion, if I could suggest, I, I believe Mr. Pacina may own multiple properties in the city. I would suggest that Commissioner Hosley identify by parcel number which property she wants included as industrial research and technology.
Thank, Kelly, if you could...
I can. This parcel ID is eighty-five-three-two-seven-two-zero-zero-nine-zero-zero.
I would amend to say that Mr. Pacina's property with parcel number eighty-five-three-two-seven-two-zero-zero-nine-zero-zero be changed to industrial research technology.
Second.
Any discussion there?
Would, would that look just as odd if that property returns to the township? Because I can't see any reason why they wouldn't want the tax dollars.
If it returns to the township, our map doesn't change until the next time that we update the plan.
But it's a future land use on something that's, we don't even, it's not even part of the city.
Right.
So, it still looks odd as not part of the city.
But if it doesn't move back, then it would be consistent with the adjoining properties.
But I can't see any reason why...
But we don't know.
Correct.
We only have this opportunity to do it.
All right, then, any discussion on that motion? It's been moved and supported to change the future land use map for the parcel ID that Kelly read, owned by Mr. Wayne Pacina, change that designation in the future land use map to industrial research and technology. Roll call, please, Samantha.
Gruber?
No.
Heineck?
Yes.
Hosley?
Yes.
Polk?
Yes.
Segman?
Yep.
Varney?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Chairman, I would move to amend the text that is so, that is associated with that part of the map on page sixty-nine. And I provided a draft amendment, and what the amendments I would make are changing twenty-twenty perenn, question mark, close perenn, to twenty-twenty-two. And then say, currently this area is zoned, and I would insert industrial one or two, comma, or, before, B2 general business. And then, at the end of that sentence, I would insert, the B2 general business north of industrial should be identified as industrial. And that, the, and, end of sentence, and the city may consider changing uppercase A to lowercase, allowing mixed use in part of this area, strike could, insert two, benefit the city's master plan goals, including increasing year-round residents in the city and providing for a cost range of residential properties, and then insert therein, comma, while maintaining focus on the need to increase tax base of our major industrial employers, consistent with their future land use plans.
All right, that's the motion. Is there a second?
Well, I'll second it, just because I have questions.
All right, it's been moved and supported, discussion?
Yes, please. So can you tell me what you're amending, what section you're talking about? Is this the description of industrial?
It's the description of the four-twenty-five agreement property.
Okay.
And the sample that I had provided to Kelly on July twenty-third, and it was provided to everyone in the Planning Commission, I believe on Monday, when I, when it didn't get included in the packet. Because right now, the language with regard to the four-twenty-five agreement is inconsistent with the future land use map, and it's talking about the future land use map.
So you're trying to, based on the last amendment, you're trying to conform the narrative now to the future land use map?
Correct, because that's the discussion of the future land use map.
Thank you.
Other discussion, comments?
I would, I would note that this is within the mixed use category description.
Yes.
But it's ultimately a Planning Commission decision, if that's where you find this to be most appropriate.
Samantha, roll call, please.
I went first.
Oh, yeah, you did. Heineck?
No.
Hosley?
Yes.
Polk?
No.
Segman?
No.
Varney?
No.
Campbell?
No.
Gruber?
No.
Sherman?
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you.
So I have, based on comments, tonight, I would move to amend page sixty-seven, the paragraph that begins with one area zoned for single-family residence, residential and planned for commercial located on North Shore Drive near Oak Court. For that paragraph, I would, after located and before north, I would strike on, and I would say at eighty-nine North Shore Drive, so it's clear that one Oak Court is not involved. And I would insert after city at the end of that paragraph with conditional rezoning to balance any increase in intensity of use and respect of setback requirements.
All right, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second for discussion. So this, this, you are talking about a conditional rezoning, which others have already said we should not impose upon a future commission.
Correct, but we see things happen that we don't expect to happen, and this is a, this is updated every five years. If it is appearing that it is not necessary, it can be stricken with the next update. But to address the concerns that the residents in the immediate vicinity have raised, it is reasonable, with how frequently the master plan is updated.
And, and I guess my, my question is, this amendment does both making sure that it's only eighty-nine, and also require a conditional rezoning, which we don't know what the conditions are.
I, I don't, I don't believe it requires a conditional rezoning, it's just mentioning that as a possibility, which I'm not sure that's necessary, but... Other comments? Roll call, please, Samantha.
Hosley?
Yes.
Polk?
Pass.
Segman?
No.
Varney?
No.
Campbell?
Yes.
Gruber?
No.
Heineck?
No.
Polk?
No.
Sherman?
No.
Motion fails.
All right, then, we still had the earlier motion to, made by Mike, I believe, to adopt the resolution as provided in the packet. Resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash oh-three.
Chairman.
Resolution approving and recommending the adoption of the twenty-twenty-five updates to the city of South Haven master plan. I believe that motion is on the floor and has been...
Clark's.
So, I did have one...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
Sorry, you're right, right.
I did have one other motion I was going to make.
Please.
So, as we've heard, you know, the countryside nursing home has been demolished, that has been removed from the master plan, and it, it has, has not been addressed in the master plan itself. And so on page sixty-four for the future land use map, talking about RM1, I would move that a second, page sixty-four, a second bullet be inserted between the two bullets that are there now, to read, "There had been a nursing home on Baseline Road near North Shore Drive. The area is predominantly developed for detached, single-family dwellings. Maps twelve, fourteen, and fifteen should be consulted for future developments, in addition to the city's master plan goals, including increasing year-round residents in the city and providing for a cost range of residential opportunities."
So that's the motion, is there support?
I'll second it again, just for discussion, and your purpose of putting this in.
Because the master plan that was, the 2018 master plan that was based on a lot of input from residents, has stricken all reference to that area for multifamily. And the current future land use map actually identifies it for multifamily attached. It does not identify it for resort, and this would carry forward consistent language for what... for what had been created for that area, based on a lot of charrette input. And without this, much of that historical aspect has been lost without much input from the residents. And the, the part about the city master plan, that's taken verbatim from what was put in for the four-twenty-five agreement.
May I ask, Kelly, if, if she find, does this seem helpful from a master plan standpoint with respect to the description in this area?
I, without reading it, I finding it difficult to even remember what was said. So if council member Hosley would like to reread, that might be helpful, but otherwise I can't offer my thoughts.
I can reread what the amendment, okay.
Yes, please.
I wasn't sure if you were asking what had been stricken, that's why I was clarifying.
Oh, okay.
"There had been a nursing home on Baseline Road near North Shore Drive. This area is predominantly developed for detached, single-family dwellings. Maps twelve, fourteen, and fifteen should be consulted for future developments in addition to the city's master plan goals, including increasing year-round residents in the city and providing for a cost range of residential opportunities."
Mary?
Is this a time for residents of that area to speak?
No, that's not appropriate now. Any comment?
Yeah, I just want to ask Mary a question. Can you help me understand what, in your opinion, would be the concerns of the residents?
Well, so several of the comments that were submitted online by email were that the master plan had changed, here, let me get my notes from the emails. So Gwen Klein, and I believe also Mike Klein, had commented about change to the master plan and removal of language in the current master plan that identified it as residential area, single-family, multifamily, attached residential, and all of that guidance has been stricken in the update process. And with that guidance stricken, the master plan is void for this property. Because the current master plan was based on so much input from the residents, I went back and looked at what was in the current master plan and incorporated language that was stricken, that, that is the basis of, you know, the area is predominantly developed for detached, single-family dwellings, I believe that's right out of the current master plan. I identified maps twelve, fourteen, and fifteen because they identify the sensitivity of that area. It's one of the last areas for, has a huge ravine in it, sandy hill, a lot of drainage goes into it, it then goes into Lake Michigan, so that provides a lot of filtration. And because our goal in the master plan is increasing year-round residents, I copied, pasted from what was in the four-twenty-five agreement section.
I see. And just once again, what is your proposal for amendment?
It would say, "There had been a nursing home on a, on Baseline Road near North Shore Drive. This area is predominantly developed for detached, single-family dwellings. Maps twelve, fourteen, and fifteen should be consulted for future developments in addition to the city's master plan goals, including increasing year-round residents in the city and providing for a cost range of residential opportunities."
Thank you.
Other comments or discussion?
And what's on the East Property Line?
Maple Glen Apartments.
Is that a detached, single-family?
No, absolutely not.
So it's not a majority?
I, I would agree.
As I said, I'm taking it from the current master plan. Other, other, not the most accurate statements have been carried forward, the surrounding area, those are, and again, this is from the future, from the master plan, as it exists now for what was intended for that area if the nursing home ceased to exist, which it currently does not exist.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Kelly has reheard the provision, if she could comment, if she has any comments.
Okay. Well, I've, I've heard the language, I've pulled up the language from the twenty-eighteen master plan as well, so I do see the language from twenty-eighteen that said, "The area occupied by countryside nursing and rehabilitation community also includes a recommendation for single-family land use in the event that the site becomes available for redevelopment. The facility's location in an area predominantly developed for detached, single-family dwellings, as well as nearby beach amenities, may render the site attractive for single-family development at some point in the future." So that was a twenty-eighteen language. This language as proposed is substantially more, and I guess my concern is that it seems very focused, my, my concern is for changing the language in the plan while we also have a development proposed for that site, and ultimately, it's a planning commission decision.
But a question on that, the, the current proposal that will be coming up next actually is coming under the twenty-eighteen plan and has nothing to do with the twenty-twenty-five plan, correct?
Right.
Mr. Chairman, I, Larry, I, I have a little problem also with the comment in there repeating another goal, which the goals section should stand by themselves. We have a lot of difficulty right now coming up with new ideas to solve problems that we have, because we keep referring to the same goal over and over and over, and here we are, repeating it within the same document. I think that's a bad idea.
All right, can we have a roll call, please, on this motion?
Polk?
Pass.
Stegman?
No.
Barney?
No.
Campbell?
Yes.
Gruber?
No.
Heineck?
No.
Hosley?
Yes.
Polk?
Yes.
Sherman?
No.
Motion fails.
So I think we're back to, it was Clark, not Mike, I believe, it was Clark's motion to approve resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash zero-three, which would recommend adoption of the twenty-twenty-five updates to the City of South Haven master plan. That's been moved and seconded?
Yep, call the question.
We have a roll call, please, Samantha.
Stegman?
Yes.
Barney?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Gruber?
Yes.
Heineck?
Yes.
Hosley?
Yes.
Polk?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And, and I would just like to clarify for this vote, to avoid any misunderstandings, is the city council has reserved the right to make final decisions, and if the city council does decide to make any changes, I appreciate that it would have to come back to the planning commission with very spec, very specific instructions.
Indeed, indeed. Moving on, item number six, new business, one-twenty Baseline Road, proposed map amendment, public hearing. Kelly, would you start us off, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, so Countryside Estates LLC has requested rezoning of the one-twenty Baseline Road parcel from the RM one multiple-family residential to the MHC, which is Manufactured Housing Community District. The combined lot area there is approximately seven and a half acres. There is a preliminary proposal to develop a twenty-four-unit manufactured housing community. As you're all aware, there are actually two parcels that are proposed for rezoning, although they were identified as one in the application. The second parcel is two-oh-one Webster Avenue. The Webster parcel was not included in the public hearing notice, and therefore, we will need to notice a new public hearing for the next meeting, and so no vote will occur on this application tonight. That said, we do have Brad from Williams and Works here available to discuss the application with you, if you have questions, and we did notice a public hearing. I know there are people here planning to speak, as well as the clients on the phone again, and so we do need to have a public hearing, and as a reminder, the application in front of us this evening is a rezoning application and not a review of any proposed site plan. The applicants are here as well. My understanding from them is that they would prefer to speak at the next meeting when that application will be considered for action rather than this meeting.
Thank you very much. So we need to conduct a public hearing, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to open a public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
And, and, and I think, just as a reminder, we won't close it, or do we need to do another one?
We will need to renotice, so...
Renotice, okay, so we do need to close and then renotice, okay, just making sure, thank you.
Unless, unless you disagree.
I think it's fine either way, if you close and, and set a new public hearing, or if you postpone with the understanding that the second public hearing, my, my preference would probably be to close it, and then the second public hearing will be on the amended, presumed amended application, would be how I would do it.
I would agree.
Thank you, thank you. Did you want to get the clients on the phone?
I will do that.
To make their comments?
Yes. Get back to the phone number.
Hello, we're calling again, we are at the point of the agenda where we've opened the public hearing for one-twenty Baseline Road, thank you for, for staying with us, and if you would like to offer comment now, you will have five minutes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, well, thank, yeah, just the clients again, and we are voicing strong opposition to the proposed rezoning of the one-twenty Baseline project to allow a mobile home park to be built on the site. First, by rezoning the property for mobile homes, it reduces the potential tax base to support the local infrastructure, because mobile home properties are taxed as undeveloped land, which means less property tax revenue to maintain the infrastructure we already struggle with. A development that adds burden to the city without contributing proportionally to the tax base makes little sense. Second, this proposal directly conflicts, as one of the commissioners cited, directly conflicts with the twenty-eighteen master plan and the city's stated priority of creating affordable housing for year-round residents, which, and the master plan which calls for a single-family land use on the site, which is also within walking distance of the school. The site zoning should be consistent with the master plan and be developed for permanent residential use, not seasonal mobile park, resort. Third, the mobile home zoning at this location would set a precedence for similar rezonings on surrounding parcels, potentially leading to large mobile home complexes overtaking the area for seasonal use. And lastly, and this is a big concern here, if it's rezoned for mobile homes, the city loses control, as pointed out by Williams and Works in their recommendation letter. Oversight shifts to, to the manufactured, the Michigan Manufactured Housing Commission, once you zone it in MHC, leaving our local government, the local zoning commission, and the city council without any regulatory authority over the site. So for all these reasons, we urge you to reject, reject this zoning request and preserve the property for year-round residential housing that supports our community's long-term priorities and is consistent with the twenty-eighteen master plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mike and Gwen Klein. So, so the public hearing is open, and, and I'd like to preface with a comment or two, a remark or two. Clearly, we have a lot of folks here who have a serious interest in this whole proposal, and we certainly want to hear your thoughts and comments. At the same time, we want to be respectful of everyone's time, and because I think there'll be some redundancy, some repetition in the comments made, so I'll, I'll ask you, please, to just temper your five minutes, and if much of what you want to say has already been said, perhaps you can reduce accordingly. So that said, you'll have five minutes to make your comments on the proposal for one-twenty Baseline Road.
Keep going, I was getting two-seventy Oak Street. I think Mike Klein said it all very succinctly, and I agree with him, and I think you should too, thank you.
Thanks very much.
My name's Tom Powell. I live at seven forty-nine North Shore, just around the corner, across the street. Mr. Klein covered every point that I wanted to make. I'm against this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you for being succinct.
Hi, my name is Margaret Bath, and I actually live in the same unit that the clients live in, and, you know, what we really want to make the point here as windsurfer community is that we don't agree with the way that the proposal is written. The developers requesting rezoning of the property include mobile homes, and the proposed twenty-twenty-five version of the draft master plan, it has suggested that space be designated for mobile homes if the land is not characterized as having excessive natural features. I would like to note that the land on one-twenty Baseline was full of beautiful trees, homes to wildlife, and provided a natural and beautiful environment for the buildings which were on the property. A stream runs through the property, which was supported by trees and foliage on its banks. This beautiful park-like setting is within five hundred feet of Lake Michigan, our most treasured natural resource, and clearly constitutes excessive natural features. In violation of written and stated processes for land developers, the trees on one-twenty Baseline were clear-cut, and the developer is currently under a cease and desist order until further notice due to this violation. Unfortunately, the order came after clear-cutting was completed. If the zoning committee were to look at that land today, it might appear to lack excessive natural features. We all know that this was not originally the case. Consideration for the appropriateness of this land for a trailer park community should be based on the land prior to the illegal clear-cutting of the trees. I ask that you not reward the developer, reward the developer for his criminal behavior by granting the requested rezoning. According to the developer's proposal, quote, "The proposed land will not determinately impact the natural environment," unquote. Unfortunately, it has already been negatively impacted by clear-cutting a massive number of trees. of trees. The trees serve multiple purposes, including a wind barrier to that property. Several years ago, 777 North Shore recited our condominiums. At that time, the city required that we use siding that withstood 100 mile-an-hour winds. We could not use vinyl or aluminum product to recite our buildings, both of which our siding is used for mobile homes. Since 777 North Shore Drive is located about 100 feet from the baseline property, and straight-line winds are very intense from Lake Michigan, I question the safety of people who reside in vinyl or aluminum mobile homes proposed at the baseline property. City Council is required to safeguard the health and wellness and safety of our community members, and the master plan should fully address this issue. Mobile homes at this site are clearly a risk to people. My request is that the planning commission not grant the developer's request for zoning changes. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your comments.
My name is Tony Materato. I live at 207 Webster, and I'm confused. Everybody keeps talking about a mobile home and a manufactured home. Are they the same thing? I don't think so. Can you answer that question?
Well, there's legislation here. I'll probably defer to Attorney and Kelly. There's Mobile Home Commission Act that defines these things. Nathan, can I ask you to weigh in there, please?
The designation in the zoning ordinance is Manufactured Housing Community. To the extent that people are using phrasing that is not found in the zoning ordinance, I can't speak to how they intend that phrasing to be interpreted.
So, manufactured home is something that's adhered to the pads or concrete or whatever? It's not something that they're going to drive up there and just leave there? Is that correct?
I believe that's correct. And maybe the applicant would speak to that, but, I mean, we know down at the corner of North Shore Drive and the traffic circle, there's what used to be Cousins and now Samoors. And those units in there are commonly towed away
Right.
At the end of the summer season, behind the pickup truck or whatever.
Right.
I believe what's proposed there at 120 Baseline would not be that type of unit.
And the other thing that I'm concerned about is that they got, they tore down some trees, and the guy that tore them down got a little bit zealous and tore too many trees down. But I didn't hear anybody complain about when they redid the road on North Shore Drive and they tore all the home, tore all the trees down that were on the east side of North Shore Drive. All them beautiful trees that were, gave us a lot of shade. And that was because the people on the lakeside didn't want no overhead lines going into their property to make it look like the rest of us. So, we all suffered for that, but nobody complained about that. Nobody. Not a person there. You walk down North Shore Drive now, you're going to sunburn, you know, if you got on the west side of the street. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tony.
I'm Patricia Stevenson. I live at 777 North Shore Drive, Windsurfer. For purposes of discussion, the term "mobile home park," "trailer park," and "manufactured home park" are synonymous and are interchangeably reflecting movable housing. The term "modular home" indicates a prefabricated home built off-site but placed on a foundation and is not movable, does not have wheels or axles, and is considered a permanent home. The draft 2025 master plan seeks to create land space for mobile home communities. Mobile homes are considered affordable, yet so are other types of homes which are classified as permanent homes. Mobile home property owners pay a fraction of property taxes, which are insufficient to support investment in infrastructure. Permanent homes generate property tax revenue that supports investment in infrastructure as well as schools and parks. Mobile homes avoid property taxes since the land on which they reside is considered undeveloped or unimproved. Why would the city of South Haven seek to create more space with mobile homes in their 2025 draft master plan to the detriment of its own revenue stream? Why would this, why would the city council abandon their own fiduciary responsibility to insert inadequate housing options where permanent homes, which generate property tax revenue for the city, could be placed? Moving forward with a plan to create a seasonable mobile home trailer park resort on 120 Baseline Road will not provide adequate property tax revenue and will concurrently reduce the property values on Webster, North Shore Drive, Baseline Road, and beyond. If this project proceeds, hundreds of citizens should and will appeal to have their assessments lowered as our single-family home neighborhood adds a trailer park. I oppose the rezoning request for 120 Baseline Road for including mobile homes as an option for this land. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
Yes, I'm Paul Stevenson. I belong with Pat Stevenson. I am, have two sheets of paper here that are exactly what the clients have talked to you about, and I will abbreviate and not go through that again. I would support the fact that we are opposed to this amendment. And I don't understand that they made the point of it was taken out of the 2018 plan, for whatever reason is not clear. So, I'm opposed. My wife is opposed to this amendment.
Thank you very much.
Mike Matheny, 556 North Shore Drive, representing Mike Matheny. Couple things. Been a lot said here tonight. I support the client's comments 100%. I would also like to thank Mary Housley for her updating of what's going on on that property. And I'm biased, by the way. She has given us information in our neighborhood to help us look at this with an open mind. And I am opposed, very opposed, to this rezoning. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your comments.
Jennifer Durkey, 243 Webster Avenue. I have been a resident, full-time resident of South Haven for 24 years. We have property adjoining the proposed development. And I would just add to some of the previous comments, particularly the woman that was referring to the abundance of natural features. And I will just quote from the zoning ordinance regarding MHC districts within the city limits. And the zoning ordinance states that an MHC, in order to meet the requirements for an MHC, it must be located in areas where it will be compatible with adjacent land uses and consistent with the policies and recommendations of the city's master plans. Sites with an abundance of natural features such as forested areas, wetlands, and steep slopes are not suitable for the development of a mobile home community. And I think that pretty much says it right there, that at this point, it's beyond my understanding how the proposed development could meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance. So, we oppose.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Diana Fleming, and I live at 777 North Shore Drive. Before I begin my statement, you said there were 40, you had 40 letters that were in...
I think the number was 44, but some of them actually were duplicated. So, I'm not sure what the exact count is, but I'll say approximately 40.
I noticed that some of them had addresses associated with those names, and then others didn't. Is there a reason that...
Are you referring to the log that I read?
Yes. My question really is, do those people live in this vicinity? Since there were no addresses...
Many of the written communications came to us as an attachment, and there were approximately 40 letters. Almost, well, all of them were showing addresses of 777 North Shore Drive.
In agreement with the changes?
No, opposed to the changes.
Well, I'm talking about the list you read that were...
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yes, there were, I'm sorry, I've confused myself. There were approximately 40 letters indicating, it says expressly, "I'm writing to express my strong support for the proposed residential community plan for 120 Baseline Road." And there were approximately 40 of those letters. Those were not at 777 North Shore Drive. I'm sorry, I confused you and myself. They were from a variety of addresses in South Haven and beyond.
And they're in agreement with the changes?
In strong support. Express my strong support is exactly what the letter says.
Okay. So, the people that came from other areas, are they, do they live here? Do you have those addresses?
I have many of the addresses. I don't have all of them.
I could say many of the names you read off do live in South Haven City of.
Many of them do. I can't cite that all of them do, but Kelly, were you going to offer something?
I was going to offer that we're, typically, this group would not treat a public hearing as a question-and-answer period. We would normally hear comments from all of the members of the public who came to speak.
Thanks for the reminder.
Okay. Well, I'll take that as your answer. What I'm addressing is the 120 Baseline developer's document that states, quote, "The site is served by an eight-inch water main and an eight-inch sanitary sewer. The water and sewer capacity needs of 24 mobile home community and associated recreation facilities are less than the capacity requirements of the former land use," unquote. This statement does not ring true, given the low census and type of use of a nursing home. Plus, the developer has been less than a good steward of the community and is currently under a cease and desist order for the property in question. Can we really trust that statement? So, have the city engineers verified the utility, the utilities provided are appropriate? According to Williams &amp; Works engineer, surveyors, and planners, the city engineer will have to make a final determination about the utility and street connections to the project. Has that been done? And do you have that report from the engineers? Will a seasonal resort create water sewer surges to the system? Are there analysis on these issues? If these reports are available, full disclosure is lacking at this time. If they have not completed, approval on the request is premature since the planning commission and city council lack detailed information for their due diligence prior to considering the request. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
I'm Remy Rubin, 622 North Shore Drive, corner Webster. I'm here in support of the 120 Baseline property. I've got a lot of disinformation letters in the mail about what's going on, and I think it's very unfair. This property will not, will not be seasonal because they'll be winterized and they'll be available for year-round, real, year-round residence. And I take exception to the fact that my property value is going to go down. All I know in South Haven is property values continually go up, and they will continually go up when there's a development of 120 Baseline. It will not affect the property values. And finally, I want to respectfully request that councilperson Housley recuse herself from this discussions as she has a vested interest as her property abuts the 120 Baseline property. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
I think the clients really represented all my comments, and I, like Ms. Housley, have a vested interest living next door to this. I hope you will not approve the zone request. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Excuse me. Mary Lynn Boogie, 70 Gabriel Drive, nowhere near the property, but I still think I have something to say about it. Currently, it's owned, it's owned multifamily. Multifamily gives an option, a wide range of options of what kind of dwellings could go there, all of which we need. We desperately need more market-rate apartments. I'll point that out. If you're looking at getting an apartment, you're going to put your name on all this at Dockside or one of the couple of other places that rent, and you'll be on it for over two years. There are many of us here that would like to get rid of our houses and have someplace to go, and maybe not own it, but have someone else be able to look after everything. That's one of the options here. Another one is single-family homes, attached and detached. You also have the option of two-family homes. You have the option of having assisted living, senior housing, convalescent homes. All of these things are vital to here. If you use zone to multifamily, to the manufactured housing, you essentially have two primary options. One is a manufactured housing community, and the other is a seasonal mobile home park. I will point out, in my opinion, it is, it should not be allowed to have a site plan submitted for rezoning. You're not rezoning to that site plan. You are rezoning to anything that's allowed on there once you rezone it. And the intense, tendency of the use could be much stronger than what that site plan is. And I'm sure you're all aware that you shouldn't be considering the site plan. I don't think other people that are speaking are necessarily aware of that. It cannot, it does not have to be what the proposal is. It has, it could be anything that's permitted in that. So, I would certainly urge you to keep it multifamily. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your comments.
My name is Greg Nisley. I live at 7421 Baseline Road. I'd like to start off just saying that I don't live in the city of South Haven. I live across the street, and I'm in Casco Township. And I'm also on the planning commission of Casco. So, I'm kind of aware of looking at this type of facility, that by the right, the right of law to be in the zoning, to be within the zoning area of South Haven. What I hope that the board looks into is, does this fit into the community around this? Because right now, the proposal seems to be making the zoning change prior to actually accepting some sort of game plan of what is, like someone has said, what is going to be the final plan that is going to be submitted. And without knowing what, you know, what type of residents were going to be here? Are they going to be owners, partial owners of this? Are they going to be renters? Are they going to be seasonal, short-term, year-round residences? There's, you know, how this could contribute into the, you know, basically into the low-cost housing shortage? It's just hard to believe that this type of facility in that type of area around South Haven would benefit that, the housing shortage in the area. I don't believe that this type of facility would meet up to South Haven building standards because once you approve this type of thing, it is going to go under the standard of the Michigan home or the modular home building standard, which is a little bit different. The same way that mobile homes are built, completely different. The standard is different. They have different criteria that the, even the building inspectors have to look at. I do think that this can be detrimental to the... I do think that this is gonna be detrimental to the property, home prices in that area. And I'm against this, uh, this type of facility, particularly on Baseline Road. I've been resident there for twenty, uh, twenty-three years now. I've seen baseline that it's worse, well, I'm gonna say worse than best. Worse back when it was just a two-track road, the ditches either side of it, and where the road was torn up, brand-new city, nice sidewalks, the amount of traffic that gets down, uh, you know, the, on the foot traffic on there. I saw with Harbor Club, it go from, you know, huge facility that they were gonna do, went bankrupt two or three times, now it's being built out again. It's got a lot of transient through there. So, I, you know, this is gonna be a tough call to say something like this at the corner, where it's at, how it's gonna fit into that community. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
Mary Mayrano, I live at one-thirty-six Webster, and, um, right across. It's pretty devastating to see what's happened to that property. And with that in mind, I have to think what's to come. I really mean that. And I think that everybody, not just Mary, has an investment in this. And we have to be careful because I think people overtrusted that they would cut down those trees the way they were supposed to be cut down. When you have a lot of money, a little fee doesn't mean much. You pay the fee and you do what you wanna do. So, I, I have questions, I don't expect answers, but I hope that consideration will be given when decisions are made. Will the property be considered a resort, a seasonal resort, a business, meaning somebody's making a profit, or homes? Year-round homes? What consideration is given for the resources that now are gonna be used, including the beach, the small beach across, as well as drainage and sewers and those things? If the homes are sold, will all buyers be considered eligible to buy those homes? I understand, there's a lot of rumors going around. And is it the role of the city to make sure that fair housing laws are followed? I don't know if it would take somebody trying to buy one to then make a complaint to the fair housing. There are many details that need to be correct when considering this property. There's so many rumors, how can a decision be made without knowing what's to come? I, I sat on the pla-, I was here for the planning meeting, uh, the master plan, and they were talking about the Victoria Resort, and now all the issues for the Victoria Resort. Why would we recreate something to, for that? I really, really hope that more information and details, details do matter. Not like, oh, you know, yeah, we got that covered. No, details, get the details. And we need affordable housing. I'm, if they were building houses there to sell for families year-round, it would've been a gift to this community.
Thanks very much.
Good evening, good evening. My name is Joe Ashen, I grew up in South Haven. Went to school at Eddie Polk, by the way. And, um, I grew up on Webster Street. I live about a half a block away from this, um, this Baseline Road development. And as a matter of fact, when I was a kid, this property that we're talking about right now was our horse pasture. That's how well I know it. Anyway, I think, I talked to a lot of people on the north side. I ride my bicycle, I walked up and down North Shore Drive. There's a lot of misinformation, a lot of misinformation going on now. People, is it a trailer park? Is it modular? I mean, I don't, I was, you know, this is a little deja vu here. About three years ago, I wanted to put in a yurt project on my property, what was, what was gonna be very nice and very classily, classic, a very classic project. It was gonna be like four or five hundred dollars a night to stay there. It was gonna be small, it was gonna have big trees all around it. My landscape architect designed it without cutting down one big tree. I get calls, I live in California in the wintertime, I get calls from people. Somebody's knocking on our door, going up in North Shore Drive, 'cause a lot of people know me, and said, "You're building a trailer park on your property." I said, "I'm not building a trailer park." That rumor ran around, went around, that I was building a trailer park. And this, I see the same thing happening now. This trailer park, it's not gonna be a trailer park, they're gonna be houses. Now, whether they're gonna be modular or stick-built, I don't know. I, I don't know what's gonna happen there, but it's not gonna be a trailer park. The idea is not to have a trailer park. I think this will be a, a great addition to our community. And I think we should somehow get the information out, the information, exactly what it's going to be, so people aren't confused and fighting each other. We had a policeman here tonight when I walked in. He said, "Well, we think this'll be a contentious meeting." He finally got bored and left, and I almost went with him. But anyway, that's another story. So, what I'm trying to say is, I think we need to get the information out to people. Instead of us fighting each other and yelling at each other, being angry, yeah, I'm not so happy seeing those trees. I came back till those trees cut down. I'm a tree hugger, it kinda bothered me. But I do think that we should get the information out there so people can make a rational decision and have a rational discussion. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
Jim Nicholson, seven-seven-seven North Shore Drive, uh, living in Windsurfer condominiums. Um, just wanna first and foremost say that I'm opposed to the rezoning of one-twenty Baseline. Again, not a hundred percent sure what's going up there. I don't know if anybody is at this point, but it hasn't been expressed, you know, uh, in a way that, that I'm clear of it. But a few of my concerns are, first of all, I wanna support, uh, I back everything that Mike Klein came out and spoke of, it's a hundred percent. I also have other concerns regarding environmental impacts, traffic impacts, whether the current, uh, sanitary and sewer supplies are adequate, that are there. And I'm not sure if there's been any studies, uh, on that, uh, that would be available, especially to people in the community, just for a little bit more confidence if something's, you know, moving ahead, so we could take a look at it and get an idea, just know that somebody else is taking a look at it and put it through. Um, traffic increases worried about. We're right at the corner there of Baseline and North Shore. And there's just, there's a lot of, of traffic there. You've got the stop signs, but people are continuously just blowing through it. So, a little bit of a safety concern with the increased traffic that we would anticipate with it. And also over onto Webster, since now that there'll be a, a through street going, uh, it could be more traffic coming through there, obviously. That neighborhood is gonna see, you know, a lot, a lot more activity as well. You know, clearly, uh, in my opinion, the proposed twenty-four, uh, trailer park seasonal resort at one-twenty Baseline will have a negative impact on public utilities, traffic road safety, pedestrian safety, and nearby residential property values. Therefore, my neighbors and I are opposed to the one-twenty Baseline rezoning. And we hope that you would say no to this project, or at least re-evaluate it. One other concern I do have, again, is back to the twenty-eighteen master plan that was put into place. A twenty-eighteen plan, uh, stated, you know, that if, if that property became available for redevelopment, they had suggested the single-family home usage. And like others have stated, I'm really concerned why that language wasn't, you know, put into the twenty-twenty-five, you know. Uh, I don't know if any of you guys were there at that, at that point or not. Um, I'm not sure if the planning, I know they had the assistance with a, uh, another company. Yeah, I apologize. Uh, Main Street, Main Street Planning Company? Are, were they involved in this as well? Or is there somebody else that is assisting in that, in the twenty-twenty-five as opposed to twenty, twenty-eighteen? I don't know if anyone could, just out of curiosity.
We did not use Main Street Planning, we used another...
Okay, I was curious if they had, what made them change their mind or why they, you know, why that was left out as well. Um, but anyway, I'd just like to kind of close on, uh, again, restating that I'm totally opposed to rezoning. And I hope that you guys reconsider it and do what we feel is the right thing for our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Hello, George Ebersole, seven-seven-seven North Shore Drive, thirty-five years. I've seen a lot, and unfortunately, one of my concerns is parking. I think that parking will be amplified problem with the development of a seasonal mobile home resort at one-twenty Baseline Road. The proposed plan shows that parking in front of each mobile home for two cars. There is additional parking shown for nine cars in the entire complex. This will be extremely inadequate during the summer season, as stated earlier, based upon occupancy for summer homes in the summer months. As we know, friends and family bring multiple vehicles to South Haven when visiting, and these cars will need parking. This will create problems both along Baseline, where already cars illegally park across the multi-use path along Baseline, and especially in front of homes along Webster and North Shore Drive. Our development at Windsurfer continuously experiences illegal parking of non-resident vehicles on busy summer weekends and holidays. Beach access will be significantly increased at Newcombe Beach. There is a potential increase of people wanting to use the beach based upon twenty-four mobile homes, with an average of six to eight people per home on summer weeks. Newcombe Beach is very small, twenty-foot wide, and sandwiched between private residences. So, we have an extreme now, uh, increase on Newcombe Beach, a very, very narrow twenty-foot. There's already a problem with trespassing of these beachgoers on private property in this area. Our complex at Windsurfer has a significant problem currently from people trespassing on or through our private property to use the beach. This problem has increased every year for thirty-five years. It has especially become an issue with the increase in short-term rentals in our area. Example, several homes have been built on North Shore Drive, north of Baseline. They are short-term rentals. These rental units do not have beach access, but they have trespassing through our property and every neighbor around us to access the beach. For example, residents, visitors, and renters from Harbor Club Cottage Development trespass through our property because we're on the end of Baseline Road, and it is the closest point to try to get to the beach. We have posted numerous signs stating, "Private property, no trespassing, no beach access," all of which are continuously ignored. We've put larger signs out, they're still ignored. We have also approached some of these people and asked them and told them, "This is private property, trespassing is not allowed." And what we are told is, we have been given threats, violent threats. We have called the police, called the police several times. The police then say, "We've got more important things to do." If this proposed seasonal mobile home resort is approved, we'll have to engage our police officers more often to engage as the problems continue, thus increasing their work burden and increasing the costs for public safety and security.
You have one minute left. Thank you very much.
Jerry Durkey, two-forty-three Webster Avenue. Uh, my wife spoke earlier, we've lived, well, she's lived there for twenty-four years. I've lived there for fifteen.
Could you bring your microphone up a little closer?
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Two-forty-three Webster, we also own four vacant lots on Webster. Um, is it my understanding they're gonna be a second public hearing?
There will, we anticipate in the September meeting.
All right, now I'm gonna hold my comments. I just wanna say one thing, is that I'm mostly concerned about whatever goes on in this property, that infrastructure can handle it. Because I know the sewer comes down Webster, all the sewer from that property, and we have a lot of runoff, we don't have proper storm sewers on Webster. Webster's almost a dirt road now, 'cause it's, your snowplows have ruined our pavement. But anyway, I'm, but the infrastructure really concerns me, living at the end of Webster. But I'll hold the rest of my comments for another hearing, because this one's getting way too long.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Richard Fleming, and I'm a longtime property owner at seven-seven-seven North Shore Drive, along with my wife Diana. My comments are gonna be about governance. Specifically, are the planning commission and the city council fully aware of the governance implications of a mobile home community? As the Williams and Works report stated, once this site has been rezoned, the Michigan Manufactured Housing Commission, and not the planning commission, or the city council of South Haven will control its development. Now, let's talk about what that means. That control that they will have is on road design, construction, parking lots, and the amount of parking, sidewalks, outdoor lighting, street lighting, setbacks, amenity placement, and open spaces. And although the city will have some input, the commission by law can override any local decision. So, the governance of this mobile home community, including utilities, will be under the MMHC and not the city. And this is a development within five-hundred feet of Lake Michigan and adjacent to a stream that goes into the Black River. Does the planning commission and the city council really want to cede regulatory authority of one-twenty Baseline, including the right to inspect it, to the MMHC, especially when it's so close to Lake Michigan? The neighbors of one-twenty Baseline vehemently oppose this project and zoning change, and we hope that you will too, after you study the pros and cons of this project. Thank you for all you do.
Thanks for your comments.
My name is Colleen Klotz, and I am a resident. My home is across the street from one-twenty Baseline. So, my view from my land looks right at one-twenty. In fact, the, um, well, I'm just gonna go back a little bit and say, a lot of this could've been evaded with information, as several people have mentioned. One of the comments I hear a lot from people that live around me concerning this is... Just a moment. I deal with some mental issues and, um, I forget things. Oh, the information. The thing I hear the most is, "What kind of mobile home? Is this a trailer park? Um, are they manufactured homes? What are they gonna be like? Where are they gonna be placed, et cetera?" Um, I think a lot of this could be handled if you, we just had a drawing. What is it gonna be there? Or photos of other places with these exact homes. I know that this landowner has a development out Phoenix Road. I think it's Sixty-Eighth Street, and it doesn't look real... I was gonna say appetizing, but that's not the word I mean. Um, this is not year-round ho-, year-round... This is not year-round homes, year-rounded homes. This is not seasonal homes. This is not to be rented, not to be sold, is not going to be a resort, and it's not going to be sold as affordable housing. This is a community that will have visitors part of the summer, and it's not meant to have like low, not meant to have people from other cities come in and stay a week. It's not, that's not what it's about at all. So first of all, I would like to see a drawing or a photo of what is going to be on that land. That's my concern. I don't want to live across the street from a mobile home park. And I'm very upset about the trees too. But I do have to say, I talked to one of the tree cutters, and I asked him, please save us some trees by the street. If you can't save us all these trees, leave some by the street. And they did that. So I was real excited about that. But that's the only thing I've been excited about with this issue. So I look forward to the September meeting. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Elaine Herbert, 404 North Shore Drive. It's a pleasure to join my north side neighbors tonight. Pleasure to see them all turn out to defend so much spot zoning on the north side. This baseline project, Bundy's Bakery, and I haven't heard any talk about the impending work at Victoria Resort. But here we are, our entire wonderful north side. All of us residential, Webster Street, Brockway, all the way from the peninsula, all the way down at the end of the peninsula, all the way to baseline, we're our residential. And now, all of this push to spot zone commercial at Bundy's and whatever, whatever they want to do at Victoria Resort, and now whatever this is at baseline, you are planners, planners, city planners, not spot zoners driven by what developers want to do on a specific property at a specific time. You're driven to do what a master plan vision has come up with for these properties by the visions of the neighbors, the neighbors, all of these wonderful people who have turned out from the north side, who I'm so very proud of tonight and who I have come to support. So thank you to all of them. Don't spot zone, not knowing what can happen on these properties in the future just because some developer has some idea. Don't spot zone. We're residential on the north side. Let's keep it that way. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your comments.
I'll be very fast. So I am opposed to the zoning, to rezoning on 120 baseline.
Your name, please?
Catherine Watts. I'm sorry, Catherine Watts. So like Colleen, I would look directly across the street at the wonderful grounds, the wonderful trees of the nursing home. And I have concerns about traffic. I have concerns about infrastructure. I have all of those concerns. Parking, we bought there because it was a residential neighborhood. We bought there for that reason and expect and hope that you will keep it a residential neighborhood. I did some research on zoning when property is zoned for manufactured housing. And once that zoning has passed, just about anything can happen. It can be a mobile home park. It can be manufactured houses. But the property, as far as I can tell, the slab or the property underneath is leased from whatever is on it, that it's a leased situation. And if that is the case, that's what I read on the website, if that is the case, then it becomes transient if you're leasing the ground that you're on. So I have a lot of concerns about that. I have not been privy to any plans by the developer, so I don't quite know what is going on. But I do know from past experiences with developers that have abutted my property, once something is rezoned, once the go-ahead is there, something totally different can happen. And then it becomes out of our control. So I would hope you would consider all of the possibilities of trying to rezone 120 baseline. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Duda, 556 North Shore Drive. I share the same concerns as all the other people here. We are definitely opposed to this new development. 10 years ago, I lived on South Haven Street, and it all became all rentals. And we had no neighbors that we knew. We had four little grandkids, eight, six, four, and two, and we didn't even feel comfortable letting them play out in our yard because all we saw all day long, all summer long, is people walking back, all strangers, nobody we knew. When I heard that supposedly there's going to be 24 rentals going in, I thought, oh my God, here we go again. Because 10 years ago, we moved to North Shore Estates where they don't allow rentals. And now, just a few blocks away, we hear that there's going to be 24 rentals in there, and we're ready to move again, actually out of town. And that's not what we want. We want to bring in permanent residents here. So I do share all the same concerns that all the other people that have previously spoken about opposing this new development, and I hope to speak again at the next meeting in September. Thank you.
Thanks very much, John. Any other citizens like to speak?
I move to close the public hearing.
I support.
Been moved and supported to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The public hearing is closed.
May I move for a quick recess?
Pardon me?
May I move for a quick recess?
Yes, we'll take a less than 10-minute recess.
Maybe we can finish this one up real quick, though.
We have a whole nother one.
I know, after this, but maybe we can finish this agenda item before taking a recess. And by that, I wouldn't say, I would just make a motion that we publish. Public notice for the next meeting.
Oh.
Tim, staff needs to use the restroom. Can we please take a break?
We'll recess for 10 minutes.
There we go.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mike, did you have a comment?
Yes, actually, a motion. I would like to, in light of the public hearing having been held, the applicant having chosen not to present this time, but rather go with next time, I would propose that, or I would make, I would move that we schedule another public hearing for next month's meeting, and that we postpone all discussion until next month, so that we can move on to the next agenda item.
All right, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion? All, I'm sorry?
So, the only question I have is whether we would address the alleged conflict of interest at that time, also.
I, well, I think that would be appropriate the next meeting, yes.
Sounds good.
Yep, yep. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion is passed. And Kelly, you will shortly publish a notice for the meeting in September, and we'll be good to go there.
Yes, and the property owners who received the notice in the mail for this meeting will receive it again, and I imagine the circle could be a little wider now that the 201 Webster property will be included.
Right, right, right. And since Brad is anxious to get going, understandably, do any of the commissioners have questions for Williams &amp; Works, represented ably by Brad?
Ask him something, that's too easy a money tonight.
Questions for Brad?
Thanks.
I think not. Thanks for your presence, thanks for your comments on the agenda item, and...
Yes, I'll ask for your permission for dismissal, then.
You are dismissed, indeed, indeed.
Mr. Chairman, very quickly, before the vote, if I could just, through the chair to Ms. Getman to set, I guess, clarify, if we are postponing this tonight, my understanding is we don't have the amended application in yet. When will the notice have to be sent out? I just want to make sure that whatever is noticed matches whatever the amended application is, so I think we need to know, when does the amended application have to be in, in order for the notice to go out for the September meeting?
The application can be, the, I guess, I will have to double-check the, the dates for noticing the hearing, we'll have, we have to provide 15 days' notice. The application itself does treat the parcel, treat the project area as one parcel, so it's clear to me that they intended the Webster parcel to be included, and so, in terms of materials submitted, I wouldn't be looking for much from the applicant, probably just confirmation that the 201 Webster parcel is intended. I wouldn't plan to ask for a completely new application from them.
No, I guess, as long as, as long as the applicant has enough time to get whatever they want to revise.
Right.
And so, there's enough time to get that to the newspaper.
And Kelly, if, if they are going to change the application, if you could ask them to correct their address from 3301 Main Street, Evanston to 2201 Main Street, Evanston, 3301 does not exist in Evanston?
I think if we're expecting changes to the application, it may be better to not specify a date, that we would schedule the next meeting, the next public hearing. That would give us opportunity to, to schedule next time if, if appropriate, or in October, or later, if that's more appropriate.
Could it be that the public hearing would be scheduled within 30 days of receipt of the revised application? Would that work?
For a regular, do you intend for a regular meeting, or a special meeting?
I mean, it... Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah. At the next meeting... At the next regular meeting that provides sufficient time for the 15-day notice upon receipt of the revised application. At the next regular meeting, for which a 15-day notice can be provided upon receipt of the completed app, updated application. Does that make sense?
That works for me.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering.
So, we already moved that it would be set for, so we haven't adjourned, we did vote on it, so I believe that we would, um...
Reconsider.
Move to reconsider that vote?
Second.
Do you need a second?
I'm not making the motion, you can make the motion.
Move to reconsider the vote of setting the next public hearing at our September meeting for the rezoning of 120 baseline.
Second.
And then, we would vote on that, and then we would have to re-vote on the previous one.
That would then provide some kind of clarity to whenever it happens, we kind of wouldn't know. I'm good with that, that's why I supported.
Samantha, roll call on the motion to reconsider, please.
Barney?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Gruber?
Yes.
Heineck?
Yes.
Hosley?
Yes.
Polk?
Yes.
Stegman?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, so now, the, you, you want to state the motion again, Mike? Or the revised motion?
I'm the one who stated it.
Oh, okay.
So, I would move to set the public hearing, the second public hearing for the 120 baseline rezoning, at the next regular planning commission meeting, such that the 15-day notice can be issued after the application has been updated, revised. Is that good?
I think it's too complicated. I think you just said it to republish when appropriate.
Go ahead.
Well, I'm, you can, since nobody's seconded that, you can just amend your motion.
No, it would be a new motion.
Yeah.
What if we just indefinitely postpone?
No. I, no, you can't indefinitely postpone.
Yeah.
Okay, I would move to set the second public hearing...
When appropriate.
When appropriate.
Second.
And we all understand that's dependent on the applicant providing updated, they could, I guess, they withdraw the current application and issue a new one, or they could amend the existing one, and Kelly, of course, needs time to make...
And that covers what you need, correct?
Yeah, it's not so much what I need, just, I don't want to get to the point where, you know, the applicant submits something different than what we expected, and we have to then postpone again. I would prefer to have...
Nice and gray.
I would prefer to have the application in hand before the notice goes out.
But clear.
Yes.
Yes.
Call question.
All right. Can we have a roll call on that, please, Samantha?
Campbell?
Yes.
Gruber?
Yes.
Heineck?
Yes.
Hosley?
Yep.
Polk?
Yes.
Stegman?
Yes.
Barney?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, thank you. All right, then, I think we're at item seven on the agenda, public comments, citizens in the audience may address the planning...
At least they'll have item eight.
We've got one more, signs.
But public comment is...
Signs.
Yeah, public comment is for the signs.
Signs, signs.
Item seven is before...
Everywhere there's signs.
Item eight, projecting signs, so, citizens in the audience may address the planning commission regarding items not on the agenda. Is there any?
Hi, I'm Elaine Herbert, 404 North Shore Drive. I came here again to support my neighbors on the North Shore Drive Peninsula. As most of you know, I owned the property on the corner of Dykman and North Shore Drive, housing the Yelton Manor Bed and Breakfast. It's two lots. One of them has the larger Yelton Manor Bed and Breakfast, and one of them has the guest house on the corner. The Yelton Manor Bed and Breakfast is an RM1 zone, and the Yelton Manor guest house is zoned B1, like the little stores on Dykman. I'm reminded, when I researched the Victoria Resort property, that there's no clue how or when that property somehow became zoned R2, in a massively R1A zone. Nobody knows how it came to be that. And I'm reminded that at one time, my corner property, where I had to build a literal hotel because it was B1, I had to build, I had to put fire suppression and, and handicapped accessibility and all sorts of things in that little tiny six-room home on that corner, because it was B1, that they penciled in that it was RM1 at one time, and I had to go to planning commission and get it, get back my B1 business zoning on that corner. I had to do that, and I had to pay to do it, and I did it, to keep that B1 zoning. Now, the entire corner, including the RM1 at Yelton Manor, is zoned B1. It's all penciled in again, so that it's all B1. The Yelton Manor is on an RM1 zone, it's not B1. And now that across the street, which is residential, and is somehow in the DDA, don't ask me how, it's not distressed, it's not downtown, it's not commercial, but it is lusted after by the DDA for the tax incremental financing that it could bring when my lovely 99-year-old neighbors pass away. When that whole corner comes up for the kind of thing that's coming up right now, that kind of zoning's going to become important, and they're going to say, I have no idea when that, you know, when that corner, I'm going to be long gone, I'm out of here. But, wow, when did that corner ever become all B1? It's not. So, I'm here on the record to say that the Yelton Manor is RM1, it's not B1. Only that tiny little corner with the three little lots on, on Dykman are B1 neighborhood business. And the beautiful North Shore Drive Peninsula, except for Bundy's, and what you lost in waterfront business and let go residential years ago, sadly, is residential, and should remain that way. So, please, watch your zoning, watch your colored pencils, because things can change, and you don't know when it does. So, thank you for that, and now it's on the record.
Thanks very much. Anyone else wish to comment on items not on the agenda? Apparently not. We'll move on to item eight, new business discussion on actual projecting sign regulations in the central business district. Kelly, could you give us some context on that issue, please?
Over the past couple of months, we received signed permit applications from three different business owners on Phoenix in the central business district, and we were not able to permit those signs because they were projecting signs on buildings that have or plan to have awnings. So, the zoning ordinance, section 2201-09, prohibits projecting signs on a building that also has a non-retractable awning. So, one of the business owners brought this up to the Downtown Development Authority, and there was some discussion at the meeting in July of the DDA, and a motion was passed to ask the planning commission to look into projecting signs with awnings in the downtown area. And so, I have placed this on the agenda tonight to alert you to the concern of the DDA and of a few of the business owners downtown, and to seek direction. I'd like to know whether or not this is something you'd like to pursue. If yes, we would work on some language and bring it back at a future meeting, and if not, then that would be okay, too.
Comments?
Kelly, projecting sign, I assume is a sign that's perpendicular to the wall?
Yes.
Okay, so if somebody were to buy a letter, or letters, to spell out their business name, and they attach to the wall, and they are out six or eight inches, that's not projecting, correct?
Correct, that would be a wall sign.
Okay. And why would we say you can have an awning, but you can't have a projecting sign, or vice versa? Why wouldn't we allow both?
I think it's, it is possible to allow both, and I asked Williams &amp; Works if they knew why this provision was there. I believe they were involved with rewriting the sign ordinance in 2019, and neither Brad nor Andy knew the specific reason for this provision. Sometimes, in a downtown, a reason for a provision like this would be visual clutter, there would be aesthetic reasons, and safety reasons, you know, there can be, there are things overhead. Anyone that has anything projecting overhead, a sign or an awning, anything like that, a license agreement is required with the city, and so...
That's due to the snow removal machine, primarily, that it doesn't catch, you know. Well, I'm, I'm in favor of us taking a look at this, loosening up, and I think anything we can do for downtown businesses that'll show their inexistence, because these trees are so big now, you can't tell who's who downtown.
I, I think we should at least look at it, and obviously, there's, a lot of people have been looking at these, and were saying no, because of this, we should at least give them the opportunity to look at it, especially with staff input, you know, what are some photographs, what do they look like? And then, we could potentially go forward.
Yeah, I agree, and I think photos would help with that kind of consideration, too. And I think it'd be helpful to understand why the request didn't work, you know, so that we understand what we're trying, what's the problem, what are we trying to solve?
Sure, yeah, I, this, the simple problem is there's an awning and a desire for a projecting sign, and the ordinance prohibits it outright.
Do we need a motion to direct staff to prepare something?
Please.
Oh, I'll move that staff prepare projecting sign regulations for the CBD.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved, which takes us to item number nine, commission member and staff comments, training report out. Mike, that, oh, I'm sorry. Kelly, anything to share?
Thank you. Well, it is Blueberry Festival, and we spent the first, kind of the kickoff day here, so thank you all, and thank you to members of the public who came and spent their evening with us, and those are my comments tonight.
All right. Thank you, Mike, would you start us off with any...
Could I just ask a quick question? So, I know Kate had commented at city council that I think there was going to be a meeting about the Hale Building, is there anything you can give for an update about extensions, if they're coming back?
I don't have any additional information. The zoning ordinance, if an extension on a, on a PUD approval is desired, it has to be granted by the city council, so that would come directly to city council.
And do you, so, we saw the notice about now accepting applications for, under the new ordinances, for short-term rentals?
Yes.
For the zoning compliance determination, you, will you be sharing the criteria being used for that, and will the determinations be published, or where will they be stored?
Yeah, we're really just beginning that process, it's something I envision Luke working on quite a bit, when he joins us on Monday, and we, you know, typically, this sort of thing is a letter that is written, it's not a permit that's issued, and so, I imagine they'll be kept with each property file, but they wouldn't be issued in the way that a permit is, it's more like correspondence that will be given to each property owner.
So, okay, well, I'll wait for Luke to get here, and then, well, thanks. And, and thank you for accommodating the clients today, that was much appreciated.
Yes.
All right, then, Mike, would you like to add anything, any comments?
No comment.
No comments, Mary?
I would just like to thank WR Grace for coming out, and, and I'm sorry that they had to, but thank you for that addition, and enjoy the Blueberry Festival. No comment.
Nothing from Janice? That would, that would serve as your comment. Thank you very much. Jim, you got anything?
Actually, I do, just a couple of quick ones. When listening, when you get a lot of public comment, sometimes it's tough to hear some things that I know are completely inaccurate, and, and one of them would be, because we've seen this before at planning commission, when it comes to either vacant property or property that does have some vegetation, the trees weren't cut illegally. If you own a piece of property and you cut the trees, that's, that's your prerogative. If somebody wants it to be a park, they can go buy the property and leave it as is. So, and that's something we hear over and over again, over the years.
And I think it's a real exaggeration to say it was clear-cut.
Yes.
There, there were a lot of trees taken down, but there are a lot of trees still remaining, so that's a, an overstatement in my view.
Right. Another one was baseline can't handle the traffic, and I'll say, as when I was on city council, baseline was the first road we redid with the new street millage, we widened it, and we put this gigantic sidewalk all the way from North Shore Drive to baseline, because we identified that as a major corridor, and part of that had to do with the egress after 4th of July. So, that road's been overbuilt, so it should be able to handle a ton of traffic. We heard stuff about utilities and capacity, and I know that's one of those things, well, if that sticks, maybe it'll slow this project down. If we don't have the capacity, I don't know why we're looking at Overton and some other things. So, I, I would actually think, we as a group, maybe we request this, the city staff and the DPW, is to give a short summary of our capacity, what we're using, and how much capacity do we have going forward, because we, we do have a new agreement with Shasta, we've got townships, and they're talking about... we've got townships, and they're talking about wastewater, and I don't really know how much capacity we have left, but I do know, when I was on city council, when we built the water filtration plant, we never did do a new intake, so we cannot bring in more water than we did 20 years ago. The only way we can up, up that is to put a bigger intake pipe in, so we're still at the same capacity we were 20 years ago. So, if that is a concern, and it's not just a concern for the north side, south side, and everywhere else there's building, do we have the capacity? I don't know. Thank you.
And that's, I did support 100 and some residents, I believe, and I don't know how many staff members were there, so it's a stretch to say there's not adequate capacity there, but...
Yeah.
Good point. Eddie, anything to share?
Just to quickly, Mr. Chairman, I did opt to take the opportunity to pass on a couple of motions tonight, to give myself a chance to come to a final decision, you know, both in mind and conscious, based on what I heard, what I heard and what I understood, to consciously, to, to, to give a vote, and feel good about making that, making that, casting my vote. And I, I assume that's, that's the proper thing to do, I have that option to pass and then come back, and...
We, we had a discussion about that, Tim.
Yeah.
Some time ago, about whether that's appropriate, and...
I don't like it, but we can do what you guys want.
Well, actually, I thought, Mr. Chairman, if I may, we did actually amend the bylaws, so that a member of the planning commission cannot pass when his or her name is called to vote.
Okay, so I was out of order?
It would be more appropriate to vote.
Okay, and I, and I have no problem with being corrected, I mean, that's... Is it? Okay, well, feel free, I, if I was out of order, now I'll correct that going forward, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Gruber?
I can't correct him, he's bigger than I am. I do remember time you talked about the trees, I remember there was a time in South Haven where they thought safety, South Haven was dying, and the joke was, last person in town needs to remember to water the trees.
That's right.
This is a tough one, we got a couple of letters from Miller Johnson. One of them talked about the spot future plan use, and it was an interesting letter, and I, I think it intended to do what it did. The other one is really tough, and, and Mary said that's something for discussion next week, and I really, or next time, and I really do think that's something we should discuss first, and to just get that out of the way. So, that's a different kind of letter, that's it.
Thanks. I don't have a lot to say, this has been a really important meeting, in my opinion, and we had obviously lots of folks here. I was really impressed that they, they didn't all take the full five minutes, they did consolidate their comments and piggyback on previous ones, so that went even better than I might have hoped, because I know there's been some situations in the past where we've shortened it to three minutes, but I think the folks here made that unnecessary. Otherwise, I, just a huge thank you to Kelly for helping me be prepared for this, and Samantha, just really appreciate all that you do, so, thanks. Hearing nothing else, I'll say we're adjourned.